I know I'm running. Good? Yeah. Okay, good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals. Public review session for November ninth, two thousand and twenty, the ten AM session. There is no public testimony during this review session that will be taken. The following items are adjourned. Two forty-five oh three BZ, one sixty-eleven Willets Point Boulevard, Queens. Twenty eighteen, one seventy-eight A, two Oak Tree Way, Staten Island. Twenty nineteen, two sixty-nine BZ, thirty-four twenty-five Rambouts Avenue, the Bronx. Twenty nineteen, two seventy-one BZ, thirty-seven Manson Avenue, Manson Avenue, Staten Island. Twenty seventeen, three seventeen BZ, sixteen ninety-three Flapshave Avenue, Brooklyn. Twenty nineteen, twenty-five BZ, forty, forty-eight Commercial Street, Brooklyn. Twenty nineteen, thirty BZ, twenty-seven oh five East Twenty-Eight Street. And twenty nineteen, one ninety-six BZ, forty-one East Twenty-Eight Street, Manhattan. The following applications have been-
Wait, wait, forty-one East-
Um, sorry. Oh, did I say something else? I'm sorry. Forty-one East Twentieth Street. Sorry. Withdrawals. Twenty sixteen, forty-one, forty-nine BZ, five hundred five oh eight Van Ness Avenue, the Bronx. And sixty-four, fourteen BZ-
Withdrawal, we're gonna vote on the withdrawal.
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
Sorry, sorry, yes, sorry, sorry. Okay.
All right, just one second. I, as far as postponements go, I don't know-
No, 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 we didn't get up to postponements, Carl.
Okay.
Not yet. So withdrawal is twenty sixteen, forty-one, forty-nine BZ, five hundred five oh eight Van Ness Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, so for a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, got you. Sixty-four, fourteen BZ, thirteen twenty East Twenty-Third Street, Brooklyn. This is also a request for withdrawal.
For a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Postponed hearings. Item number eleven, five dash ninety-eight BZ, eighteen sixty-one McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
That's a postponement.
Yes. Item number, item number twelve, two nineteen, twenty nineteen, two oh seven A, thirty-two, thirty-five Queens Boulevard, Queens. And item number thirteen, twenty twenty sixteen A, thirty-two, thirty-five Queens Boulevard, Queens. All these requests for postponements.
And there's one more that was added.
That's the McDonald's, five dash ninety-eight, eighteen sixty- Oh, you're talking about the other postponement from item eleven?
Yes, that's item number twenty-four, calendar number two, thirty-eight oh seven BZ, five through seventeen, forty-seventh Avenue in Queens.
Okay, but that's on the agenda for two o'clock, but okay.
It was a late request.
Right, two thirty-eight, sorry, that's right. Two thirty-eight, two thirty-eight oh seven BZ, five dash seventeen, forty-seventh Avenue. That's postponed. Okay, so just need to mark that. I did mark that and I forgot to mention it, okay. The following items are for decisions. Item number fourteen, one forty-one, forty-sixty-six BZ, three thirty-eight East Ninth Street, Manhattan.
Okay. Okay. So the applicant has submitted the revised plans along with signed sealed bubble set of plans to show the changes that were made to the plan. We had asked the applicant to remove the sale signs. The, it said sales from the drawing and also has added a convenience door on the west side of the property. So I think it's all ready to go. Anybody has any comments? So, I don't think we had any conditions, so it would be just a motion to approve.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta?
You're muted, we can't hear you.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Three thirty, item number fifteen, three thirteen seventy-seven BZ, twelve hundred Broadway and seventeen dash twenty-seven, West Twenty-Ninth Street, Manhattan.
So, we received the most recent submission that was submitted on twenty-sixth of October. The applicant has revised the statement, has provided a signed in since- The, and the, the development rights have been reduced. Now the development rights that is proposed to transfer has reduced. And, and the owner is proposing to convey twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And the, there were some errors in the prior submissions. Those, those also have been reviewed, revised. The applicant has clearly stated where the reduction and the changes in floor area has been compared to the prior grant. I think we had some questions with regards to the third, the third floor mezzanine. As to, we just want to make sure the DOB did look at the third floor mezzanine in terms of not being part of floor area. Because the applicant said it's not part of the floor area because it's less than the certain amount, the minimum height requirement. And I think that was a question we had. And the applicant in his statement said that they have, all the, all the drawings have been reviewed by DOB and has been reviewed by DOB. So, if that is okay with everybody.
But is there a sign off from DOB that the mezzanine doesn't count as floor area?
We do not have a ZRD one specific to that statement.
So, the direction was unless we got a ZRD one from DOB that says it doesn't count as floor area, they need to count it as floor area. So, I thought that was a clear direction and I'm pretty sure staff, isn't it, this is Jella? Jella, yeah, Jella.
Hello.
Did you, did you reach out, back out to?
So what, of that? From what I saw, the third floor mezzanine, one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet appears to be included in the zoning floor area. And I don't believe it was included prior. But the gross floor area, the nineteen seventy-seven floor area was three thousand and twelve square feet. I think it was not built to the full scope of the approval in nineteen seventy-seven, is my understanding. But I do see the one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet included in the zoning calculation.
As included in floor area.
In floor area.
Okay, so what I suggest, because I don't want to hold up the decision, but what I suggest is that our approval have a condition that apps, in the absence of a deter, a formal determination from DOB about the whether or not floor area in the mezzanine counts. Our condition is based on the mezzanine counting as floor area. Which could be cured by a ZRD one, we could actually say that in the resolution.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So it's only your motion to approve?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chair Promata?
Aye, so based on that condition.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure council, our council got that.
Yes, the mezzanine counts as floor area unless the ZRD one indicates otherwise. And the resolution will specify that that is an avenue forward.
Okay, so March, Madam Chair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Okay. Item number sixteen, twenty eighteen, one three seven BZ, two five one seven seven Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
Okay. So finally, we have everything that we need. The, I believe, final EAS and plans do note all the comments and the EAS comments also are reflected in the plans. So, the revised plans does include the revised notes, both SECRA notes and transportation notes and all other FDNY notes regarding to fire safety egres and others. So, if there any, are there any questions, Ms. Benke?
No, that's correct.
Okay, great. So I would make a recommendation to approve with the following condition. And the condition should be that a letter of commitment that was submitted on September thirtieth by the applicant to conduct a transportation monitoring program. This was what the DOT had also approved as a condition. And that the terms of the condition that is very specifically written in the transportation monitoring program should be incorporated into the resolution and should be part of this conditional approval. Is that acceptable to all? Okay, so with that condition, motion to approve.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Shabetta? Commissioner Shabetta, you're muted.
Aye.
Item number seventeen, twenty nineteen, fifteen BZ, seventy-nine forty Cooper Avenue, Queens.
Okay. Also on this one, we have the final EAS and plans with the notes that, and the SECRA notes are also included in the revised proposed plans. And similar to the last one, I think most of the conditions are associated with the conditions that we have from DEP, FDNY and DOT. The DEP conditions, I think if you make a motion to approve, I will suggest that we approve it with the following conditions. One is the DEP condition with this regards to the noise attenuation. The other one, and this is the part I wasn't quite sure whether that should be part of the condition because already it's in the drawing, but I'm just gonna post it there, which is the FDNY's condition regarding the standard operating procedure. And the third one is the DOT condition, similar to the last one, that the applicant commit to all the conditions stated in the transportation monitoring program per DOT's letter dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty. And also, in this case, the applicant commits to restriping high visibility crosswalks across Valentine's Place and Seventy-Ninth Place on their approach to Cooper Avenue. Is that acceptable set of conditions for, to the commissioner? Okay. Then with those conditions, I make a motion to approve.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta? You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, twenty nineteen, one eight eight BZ, twelve twelve East Gun Hill Road, the Bronx.
Okay. So we received two sets of submission. The most recent one was October twenty-eight. I hope commissioners got the chance to review that one. In that, the drawing includes the notes to replace that the existing chain link fence in the rear will be replaced with a new metal picket fence with an acoustical material on it. And that's now included in the main sheet. First, it was hidden in one of the sections. The revised drawing also includes all the wheel stops at the parking spaces about in the landscape area. There's also a note to, are you okay? Okay. There's also a note saying to install the sign to lower the radio and keep the noise to a minimum. The trash enclosure detail has been provided with a solid steel door with the door sweep. Now, the landscaping plan has been revised to include the planting, include planting that will be, that will deter rodent. Now, I'm not an expert on this, so I would like to hear back from Commissioner Otley Brown if she has any, anything to say on that one. And I believe the final EAS and the plans with the notes were provided. And, and Ms. Benke is nodding her head, saying it's acceptable. So, any comments?
I looked at the plans initially and provided a little research that I had done on each of the plans that were listed on the original set of plans. I did not get to do that for the replacement plans. It would have been helpful if they had drawn our attention to the different plans that they had, the different plans that they decided to plant in response to our comments because it's a lengthy list, you know? And it was a lot to go and go, well, this doesn't look like it's this. And I am not an expert, basically, on this. So, the only thing I would say is that you should perhaps make it a condition of the grant that they plant, plants that are not rodent friendly and follow up with regular, you know, treating of the area so that rodents don't harbor.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay, all right. So, any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Madam Chair?
No.
Okay. So then I would make a motion to approve with the following conditions. There be no light spread or noise spread from the menu board on the adjacent property. I think we should have, we had talked about the possibility of a short leash for the applicant to come back to shut compliance with all the conditions and the installation of all the improvements and the lighting levels and sound levels being what they are indicated in the plan. Also, on Lot Forty, this is the triangular lot that is to the rear. The landscaping should be according, I'm sorry, that is Lot Twenty-eight. I'm sorry, Lot Twenty-eight, which is a triangular lot behind the subject site. Be also landscaped per BSA Plan zero zero six. And that on Lot Forty, the landscaping area along the rear lot line should consist of plants that are rodent repellent and should work with landscape architect to give them proper guidance on that part. And, and they should replace the chain link fence. Those are already listed in the plan, so I'm not going to reiterate those in the condition. They should, should meet all the requirements and design and make the changes according to the plans. With that, is that acceptable to all?
Yes, so the short leash, we had talked about being a year and a half.
Year and a half.
Yeah. So, is that okay? Does everybody, gives them enough time?
Wouldn't that, that would mean they almost have to file in like three months? Or is it that they file in a year and a half?
No, they file in a year and a half.
Okay.
Compliance hearing, we don't have to do a lot of stuff. It's just, they come back and then we can put them on for the next hearing.
Okay.
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 I do have a question with that. Is there a fee associated with this filing for a compliance hearing?
Probably.
No, if it's, if it's the board bringing it back, it's us, if, if-
No, we're not bringing, what we're doing, I, I don't know the technical method for doing this. We want them to come back in a year and a half following an approval. Can we do it in a way where it's a compliance hearing treated differently than a, than a new application? I don't know the answer.
Okay, so I, I have a question. Is the board then interested in granting the sort of standard term and then having the condition where they have to come back for a compliance hearing in a year and a half? Otherwise, face potential revocation?
So, yeah, so maybe that's the way it would be. If they don't come back in a year and a half, then the, then the approval will be revoked. So, it's because I don't want them to have to reapply like from-
Right.
And I hope that now our calendaring system with Ted Ricketts is sufficient to give us notification that a year and a half is up and we need to expect them back. Right? So that it's not, doesn't just disappear into the wind. Right, is Ted on here? I don't see Ted.
I'm here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Go ahead. So, yeah, so Ted, if you could make a note in your calendar that a year and a half from now, we should expect to see this case come back for compliance?
Absolutely, well note, well note, absolutely, Marjorie.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so this will be similar to the appendix G waiver, I think, on Canal Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so then with that set of conditions, motion to grant?
Chair Promata?
Well, we have to close this first, I believe, right?
No, no, no.
It's, it's a decision item.
Yeah. This is decision. It was closed on nine, on September fifteenth. Okay, go ahead.
Can we, can we move on?
Yeah.
Chase? Okay. All righty, Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Continued hearing items, item number nineteen, fifty-eight thirty BZ, seventy-three thirteen Cooper Avenue, Queens.
Okay. So, the applicant has submitted a revised set of bubble plans based on the comments from the last hearing. The set of revisions include relocating the handicap parking space closer to the entrance of the store. The trash enclosure detail has been provided. It will be constructed of a metal with corrugated metal sheeting and a steel door with rubber sweep. However, the plan does not refer to the metal sweep. So they just need to put a note in the plan indicating that there's a metal sweep. The applicant submitted the proposed lighting diagram and the lighting level and the lighting level when the gas station lights are turned off. And that is BSA Plan ten and nine. Now, based on the light levels turned off and the comparison with the lights level on, the lumen level drops to nearly zero point zero, but not totally zero. I think it's very close to zero, it's like zero point zero one or something like that. And so the applicant is proposing to mitigate, mitigate that, to provide a shield, shield the lightings. And the lighting is coming from the proposed canopy. So they're proposing to shield the lighting in the proposed canopy and replace the lights in the fuel dispenser. It wasn't quite clear to me how that would be done because we have generally not seen shielding of lights coming from the canopy or so. So it would be helpful if the applicant can walk us through and explain how that would be done and if they can provide some samples and diagrams, that would be helpful. And those should be included in the drawings. The applicant has provided a document indicating that they have reached out to DOT regarding the street tea, tree, I'm sorry. With regards to the landscaping plan, this one is interesting. The applicant, we, we had also advised the applicant to look at kind of landscaping that would be rodent repellent. The applicant is proposing a cedar mulch. And I actually looked at the website to see whether cedar mulch really do work. And it seems from the documents, it, it does, but I'm not an expert. But, so, it does consider this type of mulch to be an effective repellent. So, if it does work, and I think like the pre East Gun Hill, we definitely should have a note in the landscaping plan saying that all landscaping measures should be taken that will ensure rodent repellency or whatever, that, that would rip, you know, something to that effect. Because I'm not sure if the mulch stays on the ground for too long. I've seen them move around all over the place, so we need to be cognizant of that. But I don't want to make it too onerous. If it works, great, but at the end, what we're looking for is a landscaping system that would be rodent repellent. And that note should be included in the plans and it should be part of our conditions also.
The curbs often hold the mulch in place. Where you're seeing mulch fly around is where there is no curbs. It's just a regular planting bed, like in-
Yes, that is true.
Right. But they, they have curves, that's the whole point.
Yes, right, so, so that would be a benefit. And I think it's something that we can learn. I mean, if, if the mulch can work.
Yes.
That might be an easy solution. Any comments? Madam Chair, do you have any additional insight on this? Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta?
I, I believe the language in the submission- Hello, do you hear me?
Yeah, now we-
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I don't think he can hear us.
Commissioner Sheta, I think he's frozen.
Sorry about that. I believe the language in the submission letter is, is bit confusing.
Commissioner Sheta, can I recommend that you try to use your hotspot on your phone? Because your wifi is not working from your house wifi. Can you hear us? Switch to the hotspot that's on your phone. Or if you have one of those little wifi, MiFi blocks.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Shabetta, or, yeah.
Nothing further from me here, Vice Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see what happens.
Commissioner Sheta, are you okay?
I think he's still frozen. So it takes a little while for it to shift from one to the other, because I-
Right.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, I just switched. I believe the language in the submission letter is kind of confusing. It says that we turned off the gas station lights. When I look at the lumen spread, it, it, it shows like lumen, foot candles everywhere within the gas station. So that doesn't give the impression that the lights of the gas station are off. I, I believe what they meant is the light pools only, but the lights for the cannibes are still on. If this is, if this is the case, I'm, I'm not sure how we're gonna tackle that. I believe it's tough. If, if the lighting from the cannibes is spreading lumens up to the property line, I'm, I'm not sure how we're gonna tackle that. So I, I need some clarification on the statement in the submission letter and on my understanding for that statement.
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought, yeah, I, I also had a similar concern because I wasn't sure if that was, and the, the canopy is not there, it's a proposed canopy. And is it the lighting that is coming from the surrounding street lightings? That also was not clear from the documentation or from the analysis. So it would be helpful if the applicant can clarify, under the current condition, when all the lights are turned off, what lights were on that was causing the lumen spread? And, and then add it to that, what is it? So-
I, I believe, I, I recall we tried to put this in the administrative notice when we prepared that. I believe when an applicant is submitting a lumen spread, he should highlight and make bold and clear all the lights that are on, that are participating in, 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 like producing this lumen spread. So I would like one, our project managers to look at lumen spread diagrams and make sure that the lights producing that lumen spread is, are highlighted.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at actually drawing ten. And in that, the ambient light, it, it's not very clear where the ambient light is coming from, but just along the lot line, it's showing zero, 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 and zero point one and zero point one. And that is right where, by, where the ID price sign is. So- So it would be helpful for the applicant to clarify that, but I think with the rest, we are okay.
Yes, that's correct. I'm okay with the rest, nothing else from me.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. On to the next case.
Okay, the next item is item number twenty, eight twenty-five eighty-six BZ, seventeen oh three Bronx Dale Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay. Just give me a second.
All right.
Um. So submission was made on October twenty-first in that the applicant revised the economic analysis, um, in that as per direction, uh, from Commissioner Ottley Brown, and Commissioner Ottley Brown can speak to it from what I gathered, is that most of the soft cost has been eliminated except the real property tax appraisal fee, residential brokerage fee and commercial brokerage fee. And the elimination of most of the soft costs results in a greater loss in as of right, which is what we had, um, um, stated at the last hearing. Um, I have a couple of questions which may, um, you know, may, uh, maybe Commissioner Ottley Brown can help me understand. Uh, the soft con, the cost has been revised and reduced, uh, for the proposed and the existing built condition from five hundred eighty-nine thousand to three hundred eighty-four thousand. Um, though the revised proposed soft cost is less than the as of right, shouldn't it be more even then? I mean, shouldn't it be more? I, I mean, from what I'm, uh, the proposed cost, soft cost should be more than the as of right, which is not what it's shown. And even then, I mean, it would not, the as of right still would not work, so that was a question I had. Um, and, um, I, I think there's a discrepancy with the proposed project cost in the financial analysis summary table. Um, the applicant then, um, is proposing at the prior, uh, with the initial submission, the application, uh, applicant was proposing to increase the capacity. The applicant is proposing to modify the request to legalize, uh, and the, and, uh, to legalize the built alteration on the site and limiting the capacity to eight hundred and fifty people, which is what the prior approval was.
Right.
And reduce, uh, the, and also reduce the prior, uh, board's grant of accessory parking space from seventy-five to sixty-five based on, uh, the capacity limit of eight hundred and fifty. So first, with regards to maintaining the capacity limit to eight hundred and fifty spaces, uh, sorry, eight hundred and fifty pe, person, uh, with the proposed legalization, which is the additional of the mezzanine space for a total of about, uh, you know, thirteen, uh, hundred plus square feet, uh, and, uh, the conversion of the residential unit, it comes to about two thousand four hundred. I'm of the opinion that these additional, uh, square footage will not increase the capacity of the individual banquet rooms. They're because they're not proposing to increase any, add any new banquet spaces. It is leaving the same number of banquet spaces that was there in the prior approval. And these spaces would be used simultaneously with the banquet hall. So I'm of the opinion that the, the additional square footage that is being proposed with the conversion of the residential unit to bridal suite and some additional mezzanine space for storage purposes will not, uh, increase the capacity. So I'm okay with, uh, keeping the capacity limit of eight hundred and fifty spaces for the banquet area.
Eight hundred fifty?
Uh, person, I keep saying spaces, eight hundred and fifty person, I'm sorry, um, eight hundred and fifty person. Uh. Now, I just want to alert, um, to our project manager and also to the applicant that the zoning analysis chart states incorrect proposed commercial floor area. It should be the proposed commer, uh, proposed additional floor area of two thousand four hundred sixty-two square feet. The zoning analysis on various documents include the plan draw, yeah, um, including the plan drawings should be consistent. The applicant states that the nineteen eighty-seven grant limited the person capacity to the four ballrooms located on the first floor, uh, three on the first floor and one in the basement. Um, and since the banquet halls have been reconfigured with some of the interior partition changes and other things, uh, I think it would change the individual capacity limits for banquet, uh, room, uh, since, uh, what was approved back in nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, I'm assuming it would. If so, then the revised capacity lim, uh, limits per room, they should revise the capacity limit per room and indicate it on the plan per room. Um, there is a table one on drawing A one oh one that also should be revised accordingly. Now, DOT, we know had issued a PA permit for each one of these banquet halls and that adds up to nine hundred and sixty person. It should be revised to reflect eight hundred and fifty person. Um, accordingly, the statement of facts, plans, they all need to be revised to reflect the eight hundred and fifty spaces, all the associated permits, um, and, and there should be a revised PA permit. That should be, that would be one of the conditions I would recommend. Uh, going back to the table, table one on drawing A one oh one. According to A one oh one, it estimates there were about forty employ, they would, there are forty employees. So the total number of people then in this entire facility would be lot less than the maximum capacity of thousand eight that is being proposed, uh, and was analyzed for parking. That should also be revised accordingly. It should be forty plus eight hundred and fifty, not forty plus nine fifty or somehow the other get two thousand and eight. Uh, now with regards to the reducing, uh, with regards to reducing the parking spaces from seventy-five to sixty-five spaces, the applicant in its cover letter states that by maintaining the eight hundred and fifty capacity limit, the proposed two thousand four hundred sixty-two square foot enlargement will not increase the parking demand. I agree with the statement that the proposed additional floor area will not increase the capacity of the banquet hall. And with that, a guest limit, a guest limit capped at eight hundred and fifty, the parking need will therefore not increase. However, it does not respond to why the previous grant of seventy-five spaces should be reduced to sixty-five. The applicant did not help us in its statement, did not go through the argument very clearly. Um, at the last hearing, we had indicated, um, that since the site is in NR five, uh, the standard C one-one district regulations would apply. The applicant is proposing to apply, um, C two-two slash C, uh, M one-one parking regulation, uh, which is one per eight person as opposed to C one-one requires one per four person parking spaces. Um, I looked at the zoning map, I looked at the land use character and, uh, um, and also the zoning analysis that was done in the nineteen, uh, for the nineteen eighty-seven variance. For the zoning analysis that was done for the nineteen eighty-seven variance, the parking requirement was based on one per eight, which is the C two-two M one-one parking requirement. So I am okay with using the C two-two M one-one rational here because, A, we have, it was used by the prior board, B, these two zoning districts are mapped right across from the subject site. So oftentimes, when we do have a zoning district where we don't have the equivalent commercial, we do look towards the zoning district that is right across to kind of use that to determine the parking requirement. So I would be okay in this case to exercise that, uh, parking, um, count. So that's one part of the argument I would agree. But the applicant's reference, so then I went back and looked at it, how would the C two-two apply? And what is the parking requirement, so? The applicant's referencing of, uh, of C two-two parking regulation to this site still does not clearly address the reason for the proposed parking reduction. Also, it is difficult to determine from the nineteen eighty-seven BSA resolution the reasoning that was applied to achieve the seventy-five spaces. And I say so because if we, if in nineteen eighty-seven, one per eight person was applied to the proposed expansion of the pavilion, the pavilion hall that was being proposed at that time, it would have expanded, uh, it would have added two hundred and fifty person. So if board, if the board at that time was applying only the parking requirement for the additional, uh, two hundred and fifty person capacity, then, um, then the new ba, banquet hall would require thirty-one spaces. But, and if the bu, board factored in the entire eight hundred and fifty capacity limit of all floor, four banquet halls, then it would have required hundred and six, however, the board picked seventy-five. Now, did the board come to that conclusion? Because already, uh, the banquet facility was using seventeen twenty Bronx Dale Avenue site as an alternate site, uh, as an attended parking site? And knowing that, board then said, okay, you already have a sixty-five parking spaces, add another ten parking spaces because of the two hundred and fifty. Not clear, I'm just conjecturing, I'm trying to think what could have said. So I think it would be helpful if the applicant can go dig through some of the history and can help us identify the reasoning behind, um, the conclusion that the board came to at that time and, and, and see if there's a justification behind this. I'm somewhat sympathetic at this point, given the economic condition that we are in, given these businesses are suffering so badly. And I, it's my understanding, the banquet hall was closed all this time and it has just about opened, but it is not kept, working, it is not fully operating at hundred percent capacity. I think it's at twenty-five percent capacity or something like that. So. I am sympathetic to see an argument that can help them tie over the current situation. I'm also sympathetic based on that, that maybe this is not the time for them to seek, uh, a stacker thing, but they need to help us justify the argument. That is, at the last hearing, I think their consultant, Mr. Williams, had said how Uber and Lyft such car services are being used a lot and that has resulted in the reduction of people wanting to drive to the facility. I wish the applicant had provided more documentation, backup data and factual analysis to kind of help strengthen that argument, saying because of that also there are less number of vehicles coming to these facilities in general today. And we have heard that argument in some of the other, uh, applications. Then also, the applicant could have, we had asked the applicant, can they maximize the existing parking spaces? Even though that's an attended parking spaces, it is laid out like an attended parking spaces without putting a stacker. Can that space accommodate even few more parking spaces since it's an attendant? And we know valet parkers are pretty clever. They, and they're, they are super good at fitting every nook and cranny.
Right.
Could they accommodate something that is more than, uh, what is shown in the plan? And using those argument, if they could say we could get to, if not seventy-five, something close to it. And the fact that Uber and Lyft and all of such facilities are resulting in less utilization of people wanting to drive, because people want to come, enjoy, drink, they don't want to go, have to worry about driving back. They probably want to use, uh, some other facility, uh, some other mode of transportation to get them home safely. I think those are reasonable arguments, but the applicant needs to make those argument for, and, and, and get us there. And as I said, I'm sympathetic, I think at this point, given the situation, I will be uncomfortable asking the applicant to invest in a stacker when they, they're not operating in any capacity or even get into a negotiation with the parking lot that is in the neighborhood to provide parking. I think that is a little bit further down the road, that can be, we can discuss. But at this point, if they can help us, and I hope the applicant is hearing what we are saying, and I hope the applicant, their consultant, and, and it would be great, I would love to hear from the property manager, the operator of the facility to kind of tell us what they are facing, how they have operated in the past and, uh, to help answer those questions. So I've said a lot now, um, Madam Chair, uh?
No, I don't have anything to add. I, for me, it was the, the same response that it's not unreasonable to use the immediate adjacent commercial districts because they're completely surrounding the site. And, um, also though, um, we never saw them trying to stuff the cars in using valet parking, which you would think for a banquet facility, they would want to use valet to make it as convenient as possible for people to park right there across the street from the facility. So, yeah. So I'm, I'm okay with that, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Ottley Brown?
Yes, so, um, I wanna somehow give my understanding of the case and the financials. Primarily, the big picture here is that an apartment above a catering hall does not work. I think we all know that instinctively. However, that's kind of difficult to show in a financial report. And the reason why is the apartment income accounts for so little of the overall income that it would be very hard to show that without it, it doesn't exactly work, it's very close. So that being given, they're trying to prove their point any way they can and part of that was including soft costs. But my pushback against them is very hard to have soft costs when you don't have hard costs, as in the as of right. And so therefore, because the as of right is existing as per the variance with the apartment. So what kind of soft costs could you use? So that's why I push back against them to remove the soft costs as much as they can. Still and all, they did keep the real estate taxes and they can, they kept the commercial brokerage fees. Now, this is an owner occupied site and so there are no commercial brokerage fees. And the real estate tax, you know, if there is no construction period, there's no need to put real estate tax into soft costs because you, you're paying the real estate taxes as part of your regular expenses and it's listed as an expense line item. That being said, if they reduce the soft cost to zero, then it would be much more difficult for them to prove their case because then their case would rely solely on the cap rate. And the cap rate not working unless they made it higher, which would overall reduce the value. And so for that reason, I'm not inclined to push any harder because I really understand the big picture of the case.
Okay.
Which is apartment, we all know this, who in the world would rent an apartment in the middle of a catering facility? I don't even understand why it was part of the original variance. So that being said, I'm willing to accept it as it is. Still, they should, there are, there is something wrong with the line items in the proposed soft cost. Like you said, when you add them all up, it does add up to more than three hundred and eighty-four thousand. They should just correct that part of the report. And also, they need to correct the occupancy rate because the financials still reflect the over one thousand occupancy rate and that should just be corrected so that we're clear on all fronts that they're not seeking an increase in occupancy. Other than that, I, I will not be asking any more questions on this.
Do you have any comments, uh, with regards to the parking, um, reduction? Are you okay with the request that they have made?
Um, the, well, I would say that being that they are not changing the occupancy from what they've had so far and there haven't been any neighborhood complaints about this operation, um, bringing any undue hardship to the neighbors in terms of cars clotting up everybody's driveways, I'm inclined to let that go then.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Asheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, uh, I'm gonna comment on the parking thing, I, I totally agree with, with you that the, uh, parking reduction needs some like good reasoning to put in the table. Uh, the currently, the requi, the requested reduction is about fifteen percent of the originally, uh, approved. And in order for us to let this go, we need, we need some reasoning. I understand that it was tough for them, uh, before they go with the eight fifty capacity. It, for me even was tough to like swallow that they are calling for increasing the occupancy and in the meantime, taking the parking down. So I would say they were reluctant to like tackle the parking issue, uh, during their past hearings because of, it was tough. But now I believe it became like softer. Capacity is not increasing, parking from seventy-five to, to sixty-five is kind of aggressive. If they can come up with, with something through, like you said, the valley thing and, and make it instead of, uh, reduction to sixty-five, let's say to seventy or something close to that. In the meantime, providing us with some reasonable and honest data from previous events that were held at the, at the facility before the pandemic, I, I'm very sympathetic, I would, I would take that.
Uh, I just want to note that, yeah, uh, I don't know if they have data from prior, but we have in the past accepted, uh, other cases or, uh, theoretical analysis and data. I remember there was one, um, uh, there was a ambulatory care facility in Fort Hamilton and in that, um, the applicant's consultant had provided a very detailed analysis of the trends of, uh, tribgents and how the trends of the tribgen is, uh, going more towards, um, auto share, uh, car shares and Uber and Lyft type of thing and less of reliance on people individually driving, um, to the place. So I think those analysis also would be helpful, uh, and should be in, in the record. And, and the, and the applicant's consultant did mention those, so we just need to have those factored in, um, to the analysis just to beef up the argument. And, uh, and if they can provide more, uh, things, that's fine. I mean, um, but, but if they can't, then, then we need to rely on these facts to. to make, to strengthen the argument why it has to go back to sixty-five.
I, I agree. I, I didn't say that they have to like provide data for events. I, I put it as an example, but if they can give us some theoretical analysis, I'm, I'm okay with that too.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Vice Chair, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the applicant. I, I appreciate their submission today. I, I want the board to note that they have been before us, their first appearance was basically during shutdown, three twenty-four. So from that point on, they have not been receiving any, I would imagine, not receiving any income. I understand, but, but they're now at a, at a very limited capacity. And I'm not sure what they're, what that really means for them right now. I'm not sure how many banquet halls are, are legally having events. And I'm not suggesting that they're doing anything that isn't on the up and up. That being said, and, and, and piggybacking on what Commissioner Otley Brown said, and while we don't generally like to, to say, well, there hasn't been an incident yet, you're doing something you're not supposed to be doing, and we haven't seen an incident yet. I do think though, that when taking all the circumstances together, picking on this being, we being in the middle of a pandemic, I think we, we, we may want to consider, has this been working? And when taking that and the board's already existing knowledge of what we've learned on other cases with banquet halls, what we learned of ride sharing, as, as the Vice Chair just stated, I think it's important that we, we, I try to assist this applicant in, in expediting this process.
I, I agree with you. Commissioner Shabata, I agree with you, and I think all the commissioners are leaning towards that we just want the applicant to kind of help us get there with all the necessary documents. And there are many ways to achieve it. I, I think we can let them go and, you know, should we all come to an agreement, let them go out and, you know, operate for maybe a shorter leash than typically that we grant, and then see how they do. If they want to increase their capacity, then they apply again. And then we reassess it according to the condition at that time. So there are many ways of going about it. We, I agree with you, I don't think none of us want to tie their hands, we want them to succeed. But we just want to make sure the documents reflect.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, yeah.
Okay. New cases, item number twenty-one, eighty-five ninety-nine B C, eleven oh six Metcalf Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, so we need to reopen and review this application. We had approved this application very recently in August. And for this, no proof of notice is required, I believe. Though the applicant has served the initial application and a hearing notice, we haven't heard anything from the community board. Just for the board and for the record, in the prior case, the community board had approved the application and had not raised any issues with regard to the application. This was for the prior hearing, they had taken this vote in April twenty eighteen. F D N Y issued a no objection letter. This is an existing gas station located at the corner of Metcalf and Watson Avenue with an accessory convenience store. In August two thousand twenty, as if you recall, the applicant was very cooperative with us. They were working with us in trying to address a lot of the concerns we had, the concerns around removing landscaping, trash enclosure, cleaning up the space, restriping, asphalting, lighting, signage, lot of things. The applicant took care of a lot of those things before we granted the approval in August. One of those things were also around our concern about a vacuum tower and an air tower that was initially located along the rear lot line. That was a budding residential. So we were concerned about the noise, and at that time, the applicant had proposed to relocate those air towers and the vacuum cleaner to a parking space that was right next to the sidewalk of, I think, Metcalf Avenue. And at that time, the commission had concerns that typically we noticed that when that happens, then the cars are, instead of parking within the site, it is parked on the sidewalk and is then accessing the air tower and the vacuum. And that is not what we want these facilities to do and be in the way of pedestrian circulation and other traffic circulation. So in response to that, the applicant basically said, okay, we will do away with the air tower and the vacuum tower. So they did away with it and we granted. Unfortunately, according to New York State, let me get to it. New York State Law Article sixteen, Section one ninety-two dash six B. Any, any gasoline station with four or more gas dispensing nozzles for retail sale for motor fuel are required to provide air pumps for its customers. We didn't know it, this is the first time I'm learning about it, I think all of us are learning about it. And applicant's counsel also was not aware of it. So they received a violation, summons was issued by the Department of Consumer Affairs for failing to provide a functioning air tower. And there was an oath hearing that was scheduled for October one, I believe that has been delayed. And so there's a civil penalty, so it's really, we, unbeknownst to us, we created a situation that really what not the applicant should be in, and applicant was working in good faith with us. So the applicant is here before us, asking us to modify the plan. And the applicant is requesting that this, that an air tower be placed on a parking lot, so there will be a loss of a parking lot right next to the sidewalk. I have, and I looked at the plans, and here are my suggestions. And I would like to hear the commissioners to, I really don't want to make it difficult for the applicant. I want this to work for everybody. If you're okay with that, I'll, I'll, I'll accept that, but my suggestions are this. The sidewalk that is the.
Interrupt, because Ted had his hand up and maybe he has something to add to this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, it was really minor. Um, the gas, the gas stations have been required to have air pumps for, it's been years now. Because when I was an inspector of consumer affairs in two thousand and five, I was issuing violations for gas stations not having working air pumps. So that has been on the, on the record with the city for quite some time now. I want to say at least like probably forty years, if not more than that.
But we, we weren't aware of it is the problem, and we directed them and.
Yeah.
Completely understood. Um, I just wanted to just put that, that was my feedback, that was it.
Thank you for affirming that. And, and I think now that we know it, we are going to be much more careful when we are reviewing any of the gas stations and make the applicant's counsel also be aware of it. I, I think we were all working in good faith. And the council is recommending a change. And my suggestion was, when I looked at the plan, the walkway that is along the convenience store is seven foot wide. So the air tower does not take that much space. I was wondering if, instead of putting the air tower on a parking space that is right next to the sidewalk, what if that tower was placed on the walkway? It would not, it would still leave enough space for handicap accessibility? The alternative would be to have that located closer to the handicap parking spaces, which is though closest to the residential, but there's enough of a landscaping buffer and there is a no parking zone next to it. So an air tower, we know, does not make that much noise. Our concern was more with the vacuum. Air tower is a very in and out, two second, one minute operation kind of thing. So I think those are a few of my suggestions, just to kind of make sure we have best of everything. So with that, Madam Chair?
Um, nothing further from me. What I do want to say is, we're going to see if it works to reach out to the commissioner of the agency that issued the violation and just see if they can be a little lenient on this recently issued violation, because it was done in our direction, unknowing that, not knowing that these were the rules. And so the, the applicant is kind of forced between two worlds. And I, I hate when that, when the city does that to business owners.
Thank you. Commissioner Otley Brown?
Um, I agree with the Chair that it, it's a problem when an applicant is caught between a rock and a hard place between us and another agency. And so I don't wish to give them more hardship than they already have. So if they feel that they can ensure that safety of the people surrounding the area can be ensured through having the air machine on the sidewalk like that, then I'm fine with it. I'm not going to provide any more objection.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
I, I don't want to peter, peter, if I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. I, I second the Chair's statement on, we should certainly reach out, perhaps write a letter showing an order which said that the removal of the air pump, which was part of our decision, I think that, I would hope that we relieve the applicant from any liability of a civil penalty, that it was under direction. And that's by, that's the direction of the city, of the very place that they're getting a violation from. So I would hope that that could resolve that issue. With regard to the air pump, my, I, I share both, I, I share all the concerns here. I, I certainly don't want it to be very close to residents, but I, I'm not looking, I, if, if the applicant can ensure that this is gonna not affect circulation or create a nuisance to the, to the, to the residents, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with their suggestion. And if they, and if they want to adapt a, a suggestion of the Vice Chair, and that's something that they believe will not be a nuisance to the, to the residents or an issue with circulation, I'm fine with that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, move on?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, two hundred oh one B C, one eighty-two fifteen, Hill Street Avenue, Queens.
Okay, so this is an extension of, just give me a second, let me just open the case, just give me a second. It is an extension of time to, this application is an extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy, a proof of service on the initial application and proof of hearing notice to officials is not required. The, the, this is a site that was before us since two thousand two. They, currently, there is a twelve story, a four hundred bed nursing home located on this site. When in two thousand two, B S A had granted variance, it was to enlarge the rehab facility and the extended care facility by adding an additional floor, which was contrary to the floor area ratio and the sky exposure plane. Since then, a lot of changes have happened to the zoning resolutions, the applicant, and back and forth, the commission, the application was before us for renewals, extension of time to complete C O several times. I think the latest delay was after securing the special permit from the City Planning Commission in two thousand nine. And they had to go to City Planning Commission, because according to the older zoning regulation, any nursing home that had to be above, above a minimum required floor area, it had to seek a special permit from the City Planning Commission. However, the zoning resolution has then, since then, been modified. It's can be done as of right. So the F A R is no longer an issue. However, it still needs the B S A variance for the, for not being within the sky exposure plane of the underlying zoning regulation. So because of various delays back and forth between D O B, there are some internal issues with the architect and drawings not being filed. So there's been a lot of delays. However, based on the photos, we do know that the applicant has completed the construction of the twelfth floor. It is occupied. I did not see a T C O in the file, if the applicant can provide that, that would be helpful. There are two open violations, one dates back to nineteen eighty-seven. I looked through the biz file, I couldn't find a copy of the violation, there's nothing stated there. And the last one is, the open one is still two thousand seven, which is a construction related violation. Couldn't get any details from the biz as to what nature, or what kind of construction related violation is it? So if the applicant can provide an update on that. I really did not have any other comments on it, it seems the work is complete. It's just trying to, you know, iron out all the details and getting all the documents ready for a C O. The applicant says they are proceeding with it, they just need the extension of time for the file. The two thousand nine extension file, extension that was granted had expired in October twenty-eleven, just for them. So, any Commissioner Otley Brown? Oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Very, very quickly, in, in the statement of facts, they are giving me the impression that the only hurdle existing towards like finalizing this and obtaining the sign off from the D O B is, is just some applications or, or just some applications that need to be closed. I, I have two points. Number one, what are these applications and what is the timeframe they anticipate to close these applications? To, to like get to the stage to get that C O? And, and the second thing, are there any other issues? Like, other than these applications that, that need to be closed? That's all, thank you.
Can, can you repeat the last one?
Yes, if there are any issues other than the applications that need to be closed, we, we would like, like them to clarify on that.
Okay. Do you have anything in mind when you say that?
No, but like, if, if, if there are, the, the timeframe for like interacting with the D O B was, was bit like limpy. And, and when they talk about some applications that need to be closed, I'm, I'm not sure whether these applications are related to like tiny issues or bigger issues like structural safety or stuff like that.
Okay.
So I would like them to like educate us on what kind of applications they need to close with the D O B, so D O B can sign off.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Nothing further from me, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think that closes.
Close the review session?
Yeah.
So now we'll commence with the public hearing. So, public hearing, so the S O C calendar, continued hearing items, item number nineteen, fifty-eight thirty B C, seventy-three thirteen Cooper Avenue, Queens.
Okay, I see Mr. Kanzada. I can't hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Diwakar Gupta, and I'm representing the applicant, Nazeer J. Kanzada.
My name is Nancy Lee Paul, I'm also with Nazeer J. Kanzada.
Oh, nice to see you, after a long time. Nice to see you too. Are, are there any other representatives or?
No.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay, good morning. We listened to the review session this morning. We will add a note to the plan specifying that the metal doors to the garage, to the trash enclosure will have a rubber sweep. And we'll ask, also add a note to the landscaping plan specifying that we'll take all measures necessary to control pests at the site. And then to clarify the questions about the lighting diagram. So sheet nine, B S A sheet nine is measurements with, taken with the lights on. So we measure, we took new measurements at the lot line because, at the residential lot line, because that was where the lighting levels were too, too high previously. And we saw that the light levels were below one, one foot candle, but still not zero. So then we turned off the lights on top of the four dispensers. And we also turned off the gas station lights that are mounted along the building near the store entrance. So that's. So that's uh, um, along the Cooper Avenue, uh, near the Cooper Avenue sign. And we took new measurements, um, again at the northern lot line face, uh, near the residential neighbor. We didn't take them for the entire site because we didn't think that the lighting levels could increase if, um, on the rest of the gas station if we were turning off the lights. And when we took those measurements, uh, we saw that the lighting levels at the northern lot line had decreased. So this is now sheet ten. And that meant that the lighting levels, the lights that we had turned off were spilling onto the neighbor's property. Um, so what we wanna do to address this issue is we wanna install a canopy and take down the lights that are on top of the four dispensers. And then the canopy lighting will um, make sure that it's not spilling out onto the neighbor's property. So we're planning on using LED lights which have uh, sharp cutoffs and they don't spread out as much. Um, we'll angle the lights away from the residential property and we'll use low-profile lights or low.
They'll, they'll be recessed. They'll be flat. They'll be flat, so it doesn't um, spread as much.
Okay. Let me interrupt you one second, just, just to be clear. So sheet nine is the lights from the station are on, correct?
Yes.
Both the canopy and the light pools, right?
Uh, there's no canopy presently. There's just the dispensers with lighting display around.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. Yes, that, that, whatever lights other than the pools, light pools are on. In addition to the light pools are on as well, that gives you sheet nine, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And then what is sheet ten? You turn off all these?
Yes.
So sheet ten, if, if you look at it, the only, the only lumen uh, values that you could see are the point one, point one uh, that are close to the street, right? To seventy.
Property, the residential property is where the concern was, so that's where.
I, 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 I understand, but I'm saying when you turn off the lights from the gas station, first of all, you turned off all the lights. Nothing was on, right?
Right, yes. Nothing was on.
And what you got, what you got is three zeros all the way except for the two readings to the right. And they were point one, point one. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
So I would say these two point one, point one are coming from somewhere else, though these do not belong to your lighting. So if you go back to sheet nine, you got point seven, point, so here's the deal. If, if you look at the property line on sheet nine, you got zero, point one, point two, point five, point five, point seven. I'm reading from the left to the right. Yes, if you look at the, like the final two point five and point seven without, uh, if you take off the light that's coming from outside the station, these would be point four and point six. So you would conclude that your lighting is shedding at zero, point one, point two, point five, point four, point six. I, I simply subtracted sheet uh, nine minus sheet ten. If, if this is the case, I believe you should have done something else. You should have done one more measurement. You should have turned it on just the light pools and, and lit everything else off and took some readings and, and concluded whether, because I'm afraid that you're gonna shield something that you don't need to shield and leave the thing that you need to shield without shielding. Do you follow me?
Oh, I see what you mean.
So I would, I, I, I hate to say that, but you should have done it this way. You should have turned it off everything in the station and took measurements. If you got at the property line, if you got values similar to sheet nine, you're done. Because you would claim that whatever is shown on sheet nine is not coming from the station, it's coming from somewhere else. But since you got something much less, then you proceed to the next step to investigate where from are these lumens coming, whether from the pools or from the uh, dispenser's light. So I, I, the way I would have done it is turn off, turn off dispensers, take a look at the reading from the pools, and if, if, if you're, if you're within whatever the difference between ten and nine, then the conclusion is the light pools are causing that, that increased lumen at the property line. If not, then it's not the light pools, it is the dispensers. But now you need to investigate it in one more step. I, I hate to say, to say that.
Okay, we, we understand what you mean.
If, if you read, if you read the administrative notice, you could have gotten this without like doing it in two shots, but it's, it's not a big deal.
Okay, okay.
Is it something that is very, that you can do um, quickly?
Yeah, especially now that it's later, it gets dark faster. It's a simpler process than waiting until nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
So yeah, so it could be done pretty quickly, yes.
Yeah, they need one day, they need one day to do it.
Yeah, cuz I, are there other comments from other commissioners about this case?
No.
Cuz I'd like to suggest that I think this applicant has been incredibly responsive to our comments.
Yes.
Want to, you know, delay closing, for example, so maybe we could just, and but we don't do close votes during our Zoom period. So maybe what you could do is do the test, like, we'll see if there's any public testimony, but we closed the hearing today, do the test, make any necessary changes to the drawings to reflect the notes that you mentioned earlier. And, and then that's, that's the submission prior to. Okay?
Yeah.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, I like that suggestion. Thank you for reading my mind, Madam Chair. And uh, and uh, so let's uh, see if there is any public testimony.
So this case is fifty-eight thirty BZ, seventy-three thirteen Cooper Avenue, Queens.
So, while we are waiting for um, uh, people to dial in, if there's any, uh, how long will it take?
Uh, we can definitely do that within a week.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So there are three people in the waiting room, but um, I don't know if.
Oh, I can't see that. Okay, I'm sorry.
Do any, does anyone, those people have been added into the?
They added the next round of applicants.
You added the next round. But if anybody wants to speak on this application, um, please raise your Zoom hand, um, cuz they're all Zoom dialed.
Thank you. I, I still haven't figured out how to manage that part.
We'll give you a tutorial for break.
Um, so Mr. Gupta, you said you need one week to do the analysis and also revise the plans and uh.
Make a submission.
Yes.
And make a submission?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what the, I, I think we have a pretty loaded calendar, but we'll try to see if we can um, add this um, to the next hearing, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, yeah.
Yeah, we'll try. Um, so if it's okay with everybody, we haven't heard anything from anyone from public, um, I make a motion to close.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chandra?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibata?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item is, oh, sir.
Sir.
May we move on?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Eight twenty, eight twenty-five eighty-six BZ, seventeen oh three Bronx Dale Avenue, The Bronx.
Okay, I see Ms. Rantia. Anyone else from your team?
Mr. Williams.
Yeah. Barbara Cohen. Williams and Barbara Cohen.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Proceed. Go ahead, Ms. Rantia.
Um, so uh, we listened in on the review session and as uh, Commissioner stated, we are asking the board to legalize the alterations and allow the owner to keep the existing sixty-five parking spaces that served the banquet hall since nineteen eighty-three um, and modifying the prior condition that required seventy-five spaces. So we believe that we have made the case that the existing parking lot with sixty-five spaces does adequately serve the banquet hall. Um, it is an attended lot. It's at maximum capacity and that is shown in the submitted drawings. Um, there is no way to accommodate more spaces in that lot because zoning has a minimum of two hundred square feet per space.
No, but not for attended parking.
For attended. It's minimum three hundred and then minimum two hundred for attended. So if we could accommodate more, we wouldn't be opposed to it. It's just that I don't think DOB would accept it cuz we, we do seem to be at maximum capacity there according to the minimum size required by zoning. Um, the.
I wanna say that that's strange.
I have a deep, sorry, line is, we see so many parking garages and lots in our applications where they squash the cars in.
Um, where really it's pretty impossible to imagine how the valets are able to do such a tight job and nonetheless they do these tight jobs. So I think that's what we're asking for is show us um, the miracles of valet parking, parking, at least we'll not, because by the way, the reality is in parking lot, um, the valet parkers park everything they can in there, right? And they're not sitting there with their two hundred square foot measurement calculator.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, my concern though is that once the plan is brought to DOB, DOB won't accept it because it doesn't meet the minimum. But um, we did submit.
Uh, Ms. Rantia, I just want to be clear, uh, for my understanding. So in order for you to operate an attended parking facility at this location, you have to get DOB approval and DOB is going to exercise some minimum uh, that they use?
Well, the, the parking lot right now has a C of O from nineteen eighty-three. If there is no change required to that lot, there's no reason to go back and undergo review by DOB. It's just that to the extent that there's a, there's a plan out there that has been approved by the BSA that shows the lawful number of spaces, um, it should meet the minimum zoning requirement. Uh, so right now, we do meet that. We're at the maximum capacity at sixty-five. And there is this existing nineteen eighty-three C of O that, that would presumably authorize those spaces, notwithstanding that falls short of what BSA has required in the prior grant. Um, so the, the layout of the parking, and you see it's quite tight. Um, it's on A four oh one of the drawings. Um, and you see that, you know, all the, all the space, all the spaces are occupied and you even have cars backed up against each other. Presumably the, you know, the valet will go in and, and maneuver them around um, and has enough space to do that, to move cars out of the way while cars that are pinned in the back can come out, come in and out. Um, so you know, that's the condition of the existing lot. It's been that way for thirty-seven years. It's served this banquet hall. Um, our field observations, and these were documented in, in photos and counts by, by the uh, in the parking demand study, that was done pre-pandemic. And it observed the conditions at maximum capacity. And the observation was that the lot was not fully utilized even at that time. Um, and now we know that conditions have changed since the last grants, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety-seven. Now we have uh, Uber and Lyft and we have this more common use of these um, you know, taxi, the, these ride hail services.
Um, and before you go back, we, cuz we've heard this part of the presentation, right? But I'm, I'm still struggling with this two hundred square foot. We see quadruple stackers. The equivalent of, you know, four cars parked in with a tiny drive lane. And in fact, many times they don't even have a drive lane. You drive through the stackers to get to the next row of stackers. So is DOB actually, I mean, those two hundred square foot um, rules were written before the prevalence of stackers, for example. Is DOB actually imposing the same standard even when, I mean, that's what I, I'd like to know, I mean.
Yeah, my understanding is that each level of the stacker is counted towards the two hundred. And then there's some additional maneuvering space that's required in front of the stacker. So that each pad provides the minimum uh, required by zoning. Um, and so in, in the case of stackers, you are able to, you know, make more use of your small-sized lot uh, that wouldn't allow that capacity if they were all at ground level in an open lot.
Um, and. Lisa, can I, can I weigh, weigh in here just briefly on, on um, the operations uh, related uh, to valet parking and how this is different? Um, you know, I, I, I'm, so this is Kevin Williams from Equity and Environmental. Um, and I think it's important to note, and I, I hear the, the board trying to, to say, hey, let's make optimal use of this lot. And I believe that we provided a diagram that shows how this works. But I, I think it's critical to understand how this valet operation, we should not be shoving every last car in here because you have departures that are, are, are peaked, right? People are not wandering in and out of their car, giving the ticket. You have thirty and forty people at a time leaving an event. And, and what that creates is you, the more cars you put in there, the more processing time to get the vehicle out. So I mean, I have twenty-five years of parking experience and, and they are using every single space possible, uh, if necessary. And so I, I mean, I, I, I think we, I, we, I'd like to come back to this issue about whether or not more cars can be put in here. And I like to discuss the need first and then we can get to that because I, I think it's pretty much been shown, you know, they're doing everything they can. And it's a safety issue when you pack in too many cars. It's also a liability issue when you pack too many cars into a lot like this. And, and yes, these guys are gonna do what they're going to do. But I think we need to find a solution that rationally evaluates what the demand is, what it has been and, and what as, as the board spends some time discussing, what the rational offset can be from historic experience given the presence of vehicle for hire services which have come into vogue. And so I, you know, I, 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 I'm sure that we can talk about geometrically how, how much folks can plug in here and, and see if there's an extra. But I, I'd like to work it maybe from the other end. So sorry, Lisa, I just wanted to pop in. And at least if you'd like me to just weigh in on some of the um, the points that the, the, the board raised. And, and I, I think I'd say for all of us, we very much appreciate each and every member of the board's consideration on this matter and, and the things that we've done on, on the applicant's side to reduce occupancy. So the first part I would like to state, as Lisa indicated, was that the site has, has, has with the, basically the current occupancy has worked effectively with the spaces that's, that have been supplied to date. The grant that was done in the past was indicated for seventy-five spaces, but spatially, it only accommodated sixty-five spaces. So what we're doing is we're correcting the grant. So we're, and what, what has been shown here is that um, our two observations on a, on a Thursday with a full slate of events and a Saturday with a full slate of events during. and a Saturday with a full slate of events during the full operational period, that the parking lot was, had many available spaces even for normal pulling. That's not to say that there are different types of clientele that might come that might be more car, you know, greater share of car utilization. But, you know, we did look at this two days. We have photos in our report that show that it works. Now, the second thing is we also did, as I think Vice Chair and Chair indicated, we looked at this from a mathematical factor perspective, right? And we used a pre-vehicle car for hire analysis that had the most conservative sort of trip generation associated with it and applied it to this location which has less car ownership than the EIS that we referenced. And one of the things that I've done in the 30 minutes between your guys' hearings, I tried to pull up research reports on Uber so we can have something to hang our hat on in terms of the reduction. And I have a study that was done by University of Texas and it was in Austin. But they showed that the one way that they tested what the impact of transitioning personal, private car owners' behaviors to rideshare was to evaluate when ridesharing was shut down and not made available. What was the mode choice result from that? And they surveyed a bunch of users of those services. And it was indicated that a 32% reduction in the use of private cars was noted in that analysis. And I don't know if it's that high, but that's quite significant. And maybe one of the reasons why we're seeing less utilization of the lot than contemplated when the grant was first awarded. So remember, when the grant was first awarded, you know, there was really no check on, you know, it was just sort of applied. And the board is much more scientific and detailed and method, you know, methodologically in their questioning than it was, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And rightfully so. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, us consultants are always on our toes is because you're all very incisive. And so in terms of reawarding or updating this grant, I think the way that we should look at this is it's been operating at the same capacity in terms of number of patrons as it will today, as has been adjusted. The number of spaces, as the Chair, Vice Chair noted, we have not had anybody pop in regarding complaints. There's no particular notice of cars clogging local streets. And then also, in addition, if we look at the observations that we made, you know, during traffic season off COVID, there were parking spaces available. So I think what our argument is that even though there was supposed to be 75 spaces and in fact, there were only 65 and that that was accommodating that demand. And in addition to that, that demand, whether it's 30% or 15%, has actually declined because of the preference for people that might be consuming alcohol, staying out late, that the absolute preference is to take a rideshare service, much more convenient, available on demand and that that has lessened the demand. And in that sense, we feel that 65 spaces is a more appropriate application of assessing the demand of what is the previous and the existing facility. And I think, A, both our parking study in terms of showing available reservoir in the area as well as specifically on the lot and some of this anecdotal information, which I would be happy to share with the board. I only had a few minutes to pull it, but it's also, I see this throughout our types of traffic studies. One of the things that my firm does is liquor license traffic studies. And that's been one of, for the last 15 years. And that's one of the very significant changes that we've seen. And actually, it's negative in that sense because it's more curbside drop offs rather than people going to parking garages and walking. So what we found is for facilities that, you know, serve liquor and have people enjoying events with one another, that in fact, the utilization of those rideshare vehicle for hire services have reduced private car utilization to their destination. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You had stated something to that effect and you elaborated on it today and I appreciate that. And I think in your next submission, if you, please beef up all those with these factual analysis. And it's interesting, you mentioned the Austin study. I mean, this is Texas. Cars is everything. And if in there, they're seeing a 32% reduction, I think that's something, it's a pretty big chunk of a number. And so I think those information will be very helpful to help you making that argument and help us make the finding. And so please do provide that, those documents. You had stated that and I was hoping that was included in the reports that we received.
I just want to note, Commissioner Sheta and Chief Daley have their hands up. So go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair heard testimony on this application in mentioning of parking stackers. Of course, with the position of even for exterior parking stackers that we, the fire department, would want fire protection. And I just looked at the video of photographs of the site. I see it's an open vacant lot. If your proposal puts parking stackers, the applicant would have to construct a room on that site, provide new water service to that site, provide a dry sprinkler system into parking stackers. Now we're talking a very substantial monetary outlay by the applicant. But I just wanted everyone to be aware that it would be the department's position that any exterior outdoor parking stackers would have to provide a fire suppression system, in this case, a dry sprinkler system.
Wow. So is that the standard? When we go by parking stacker locations, they have sprinkler systems?
Yes, ma'am. They, all new outdoor stackers will have a dry sprinkler system built into their, to the parking stackers. They'll be fixed and along the rail and they would have to provide heads at the front and rear of the car over the trunk and the motor area of the cars. Yes.
Wow. Well, for sure, we were trying to avoid stackers in this conversation. We were just trying to.
Oh, yes.
Cars. But yeah, we appreciate that because I don't think we knew that.
Right.
In terms of other parking lots that we look at.
This is Kevin again. I'm sorry. I would also note, and Mr. Daley kind of brought up another concern with stackers is they generate noise and at multi-levels, you know, 65 to 67 decibels where we have a backend to a residential neighborhood. So, you know, that's another consideration here. If we can prove and demonstrate properly that they're not necessary, I think it helps us all.
Yes, I would agree with that. Given the residential nature around that parking spot, it wouldn't just stop at what the FDNY is asking based on what you have heard from the board in prior cases. You know, if this was needed, it came to that, we don't think, but you need to help us get there. Noise, landscaping, buffering, there'll be so much added to it. So you really need to help us just get us there. And so please make the next attempt work in your favor.
Commissioner Sheta has his hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Williams and Chief Daley for your comments. Very structured. But my thinking, at least from my side, I'm not pushing like towards stackers. I don't think the asked, the requested reduction from 75 to 65 like mandate going to stackers from ad-vaire parking to, I don't think that. But as a member of the board, I believe we need something to justify almost 15% reduction. And what I meant is I recall that you previously presented to us some data from pre-pandemic indicating that the parking was not fully utilized. My point is, if you, I believe my response to, I recall, my response to that presentation was the events that you used to prove it to us that the parking was not fully utilized were not peak events. So my thinking, and I'm not a traffic engineering expert, you are, Mr. Williams. If you can use the data you presented back then to project at the full capacity, the full occupancy, which is 80, 850, what would be the parking utilization of that parking lot be? That would be very helpful. If it gets to 65 or less, I believe this is the kind of theoretical approach that we're looking for to let it go.
I think looking at it, you can just use, look at the calendar of events that you have scheduled and you can use that to kind of justify whether you do have it operating at full capacity. And if it is not full capacity, then what you have taken is the typical thing. That would be another way of also going around answering Commissioner Sheta's question is that what you picked was the typical maximum utilization given the past calendar of events.
Well, there is no past calendar of events, so it's going to have to be a year ago's events, right?
Right, that's what I mean. That's what I mean by last year's event, calendar of last year's calendar, calendar of events. What you had picked was the typical worst case, kind of the maximum utilization and just kind of give us in a narrative, what is a typical, you know, usage and how this kind of fits in that is representative or is the worst case.
Right. I just want to add one other factor. And I'm curious whether the transportation sort of analysis industry has been looking at this at all is the effect of sort of germ fear on the users of things like Uber and Lyft. Whether it's because we know that it's forced more people out of general public transportation. So fewer people on the subway, people I know who never owned a car before are now owning cars, things like that. Has there been, I want to say, sort of a fall off in the use of, obviously, at the beginning, there was a fall off in the use of Uber and Lyft. But has that, has that come back closer to normal numbers now? As people get more and more comfortable with the idea or maybe even more people using it because they're staying out of the subway? You know, that kind of thing. That's, I don't know whether such studies have been done, but I'll bet Uber's been tracking its own, its own data. So.
There. Yeah, so that's something, you know, I've been in constant discussion with friends that work at DOT and other colleagues that specialize in transportation. And it's incredibly difficult to tell for a few reasons. First of all, Uber and Lyft would tell you that it's bloodbath out there. So would yellow cabs. It's 16.9% unemployment in New York City. It's higher in the Bronx. So all across the board, I think it's very difficult to tell, you know, your average working class person is not out buying a car. If they're not going, taking public transportation, it's because they don't have a job. Not because they, you know, they sort of choose to use one thing or another. So I don't think, right, you know, to answer simply the question from an analytic perspective, without direct survey, and, you know, obviously, we see the veracity of surveys these days are called into question to some degrees. But I think it will be a while before we can make a determination of the combination of, you know, folks going into the office, which apparently is still down 20 to 25% in the city. You have restaurants that, you know, 25% capacity. And so it's just a very muddied picture, I think, in terms of whether folks use rideshare or not. But I have a feeling, you know, that people will use what they still have at hand at, you know, minus a few percentage points about concern for COVID. But yeah, I think it's, you know, we try to forecast demand in a normalized situation and I don't think we know what the future normal is. But I guarantee you, I will continue those discussions and monitor the data that comes back so we can try to factor that into the way that we think about things. I did want to have a chance to address Commissioner Sheta's comment. So on the notion of a peak event and whether we looked at peak event. So we specifically queried the applicant on two days, a weekday and a weekend that were typical peak utilizations of their space and we surveyed those. And during those surveys, and that's not to say that there's not a two standard deviation outlier where it's like whatever, fully, the building is fully occupied. You know, but we looked at this in two ways. We looked at it in worst case condition with 92% private car drive using the Silver Cup FEIS for trip generation factors related to a catering facility. And then we also observed the two days in the field, Friday and a Saturday, and evaluated the demand. So I want to make it clear that we did do this. And it arrived at numbers, you know, in one case, in terms of our study in the field, you know, we didn't go and survey individual people. It's too difficult while people are going to an event to say, hey, how did you get here? How would you get here? That sort of thing. Or to even observe because you have people dropping off down the street in front of the curb pulling in. It's an impossible monitoring situation. So we basically look at the raw data. How many people are parking before and after, right? On-street parking as well as in-the-lot parking. And we have, you know, those are the sort of things that we have to hang our hat on given the gross way that sort of seeker has you look at sort of traffic and parking. But I do understand, Commissioner Sheta, what you're looking for. And what I'll try to do is to draw those conclusions and our observations and some of this additional anecdotal information into a more pithy response to your specific concerns. But I do want to go back to this notion. We're really only asking for a reduction in parking on paper, right? I hope everyone understands that because in actuality, there is no reduction on-site of parking. The functional parking that it's, they granted 75 spaces 20 years ago, but the parking lot has never had 75 spaces. It's always been 65. So the point of this was to correct that error in the application as was put forward many, many, many years ago. So we are actually not reducing the number of functional spaces or the square footage available in that lot. So I want that to be clear. So the fact is, we're either A, not changing the spatial arrangement of the lot or its use, or B, adding more patrons to the facility. And based on our observations, on two days with a full calendar at this facility, we still had a number of available spaces and it was not being utilized as you would see this sort of typical maze of valet parking. There were spaces available, about 30% of that occupancy was still available. So I just want that to be the backdrop as you consider our additional submission to A, more directly respond to Commissioner Sheta, B, more directly respond to Vice Chair with some of the scientific or the surveying data that's been done on mode behavior switches and hopefully that will get us where we need to be.
I just have a question about that and I see Commissioner Sheta's hands up also. My question about that is you just said to correct a mistake in the application. Is it your understanding that the applicant was the one who said, can we have 75 spaces? Or is it your understanding that the board said, however it decided it back then, 75 spaces is the sweet number? Because it's not a mistake, it's a mistake if the applicant asked for something it couldn't deliver and the board said, good to go. It's not a mistake if the board said, based on some kind of analysis, that 75 spaces is the sweet number and that's what you need to give us.
I'll let Ms. Arantia respond to that. I just don't think we have a clear record. But my understanding is it was just sort of very capriciously assigned without looking at the spatial configuration that was present there. And, you know, I don't, we just don't have a substantial record on that remark to look at, to look at that. So I think it was just sort of very, and I want to say capriciously because I haven't reviewed all the details. But Lisa, I mean, you and I discussed this. I just don't think we know, right?
Yeah. So I just wanted to add one thing about the parking study and the.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to add one thing about the parking study and the and the peak period. It was a Saturday peak period, and it was at a time when there were four simultaneous events going on at the banquet hall. And still, it was al- almost half capacity in the parking lot. Um, we did go back and look at the prior resolutions to try and understand what was the basis for requiring seventy-five spaces? What happened that only sixty-five were ever provided? Um, if you look back, nineteen fifty-three is when the original two-story building was constructed. It was a non-conforming banquet hall. Nineteen eighty-three was the first enlargement, added floor area. Um, and the resolution notes only in a whereas clause, whereas the applicant has provided parking across the street. And unfortunately, in nineteen eighty-three, there were no plans showing this parking lot, showing what size it was, where it was, how many spaces were in it. Um, in nineteen eighty-seven was another enlargement. Um, and this is when the um, um, there was an additional four thousand four hundred square feet added. It sort of filled in a courtyard in between the the two existing portions of the building. Um, at that time, that enlargement would have allowed an additional capacity, if it was as of right, would have allowed two hundred and fifty people. And that's where you see the applicant providing the information, showing one one per, one space for every eight people of the two hundred and fifty people. That gets you thirty-one, thirty-two spaces. This was noted in the approved plans. However, at that time, the applicant said they didn't want to add any more people. They were going to keep the existing occupancy count. And at that time, at the time of that application, they showed uh, seven hundred people on the first floor and one fifty in the basement. And those were just the party room occupancies. That that didn't take into account any others, any other spaces in the building. And they said, given that we're adding this new um, courtyard banquet hall space, it would allow an additional two hundred and fifty people, thirty-two parking spaces, but we're not going to increase occupancy. And the board approved it. Um, and and again, with with no, no plan showing the parking space, the parking lot. Um, and and in eighty-seven, we know that the public records showed in nineteen eighty-three C of O for that parking lot with only sixty-five spaces in it. Um, so and and there's no analysis explaining in the in the in the whereas or in the conclusions of the resolution, no argument made in the submission explaining what the parking was. I I assume at the time, the the board and the applicant intended to preserve what was existing. And somehow, there was a statement about seventy-five spaces. However, only sixty-five were existing. It's always been that way, as I said, for thirty-seven years, serving this banquet hall. Um, so now we're at the point where we have again made an enlargement, and once again, not asking to increase the occupancy count of the party rooms. So you still have seventy, uh, seven hundred guests on the first floor and one hundred and fifty guests on the in the basement party room. So a- and uh, as as noted earlier, the areas of the conversion and the uh, increased floor area and the two mezzanines, those don't add to an increase in guest count, because we assume that those spaces are going to be either occupied by staff or they're going to be occupied by guests already there to attend an event in one of the ballrooms. So they will be included in either though, in in the numbers. Now, the the DOB has issued place of assembly permits for those ballrooms and party rooms. And that's where you get the numbers reflected on the occupancy table on the submitted plans. Um, now, we showed in this table one where you would see the increase, the the initially proposed increase in guests. So that initially, the owner wished to add a hundred and ten guests to one of the ballrooms. Now, we've modified the request to say, let's keep it the same, three hundred and fifty guests in that ballroom. So now you don't have the extra hundred and ten guests for which additional spaces would you might consider a need to serve them with additional spaces. So keeping the same number of guests and together with the data that Kevin has compiled, saying the parking, it as it has been for thirty-seven years, is already underutilized. You have this shift in the way people are using transportation. No clear analysis in the prior resolutions as to why seventy-five in particular was considered appropriate. Um, and so I think with all that together, and the applicant being, you know, not being in a financial position right now, as you noted, to add stackers or to enter into a lease for additional parking. There aren't even guests right now to uh, to use that parking. Um, and so I I think what what the applicant essentially is asking for is is a status quo. Uh, it is to add floor area, but it is not to increase the number of guests who would require spaces. And the existing spaces serve the existing number of guests.
Um, Shabetta had his hand up too.
That was, uh, I did have a comment earlier, and that was with regard to um, a statement that was made by you, Chair, uh, that the rideshare platforms would be less utilized because of fears of, uh, it may be affected by the fears of viruses or germs, et cetera. I think the same people that would, uh, I I think, I think it would follow that if they are less likely to use a rideshare platform, it also be less likely to attend the banquet hall.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And and again, I think we should keep that in mind, as I've just stated. Uh, there, I think there, when will it likely be that they will have full capacity again with that? These concerns, I I know that's an unknown, but I think it's something that we should keep in mind.
Yeah, I I I definitely, at some point, somewhere down the road, we'll probably see DOT kind of revising some of its trip gen analysis based on a lot of these car service utilizations and studies. So maybe Mr. Williams at some point will be able to educate us on those parts also. Um, but um, I agree with Commissioner Shabetta. Um, I I think as we know, this, these facilities are really operating at less than half capacity. So number of parking demand is definitely, there's not, no issue at this point. And even if uh, if it starts getting better, there would be those who would be concerned about using rideshare for the very same reason, wanting to attend um, or attend and rideshare, vice versa. So um, I think what you're hearing from us is just give us a uh, just tighten up all the loose ends and give us a better narrative. And and I think, as Mr. Williams said, kind of go through the argument of why even what was projected then is not realistic, given the current trends uh, of not current trend in terms of the pandemic current trend, but what was pre-pandemic trend and how um, that may likely have been, because uh, we're hoping this is a, this is just an anomaly what we're in, and things would normalize to what it was pre-pandemic. Um, um, are there any other questions with regards to parking? Because we we do have Ms. Cohen, and I'm sure she would want to respond to some of the questions, Commissioner. Can't hear you, Ms. Uh.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, no, just you had some clarification that you wanted, and I just wanted to miss uh.
Oh, I wanted them to make the corrections to the soft costs in the proposed.
Right.
Check the numbers.
Um, if I can just uh, make a a couple of comments. Um, you had mentioned the, uh, to take out the commercial brokerage on the proposed, saying it was unoccupied. And the approach we always take is is um, to assume it's a an available space, an available building, and and assign, based on lease comps, a rental rate, assign a lease up. And there were actually some construction costs, because there was the work associated with the um, uh, the mezzanines, um, uh, the bridal suite and the the kitchen storage mezzanine. Um, so.
That would be in the proposed, though.
Yes.
I was talking about the as of right. There was no work done in the as of right, because the as of right is the variance.
Okay.
But if you listen to all of my comments, I was un, I was understanding the difficulties that you had in proving your major point of the entire case, which is that apartment does not work here, and I accepted that. So all I wanted you to do was just tidy up your proposed line items and the soft costs, because it doesn't equal what the total was.
No, that, yeah, Excel forgot the last line.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 no, that that, yes, absolutely correct that. And then um, uh, match occupancy to the new proposed occupancy. But okay, I, that's fine, misunderstood. All right, I'm good.
Um, I want to go back to the occupancy. I mean, um, the table one that's there in drawing, uh, A one oh one shows the permits that has been issued by DOB. And, you know, going forward, um, this will have, this will be a condition that the PA permit be revised to reflect the changes. And those need to be, uh, and it can, it has to add up to a total of eight fifty. Right now, what is listed adds up to uh, nine sixty-seven guests. Uh, so just if I look at it, so the first ballroom, uh, nineteen eighty-seven capacity was three fifty. Uh, the uh, the CO is four sixty. Crystal room, uh, ballroom is two hundred per eighty-seven, it's one ninety-seven for this new table. The basement party room is one fifty per proposed, one fifty-seven. Pavilion is uh, per eighty, nineteen eighty-seven is two fifty, proposed is one seventy-five. So the total is, based on the proposed CO, is nine sixty-seven. We are going to limit to, so the P, the PA permits are showing these four sixty, one seventy-five, one fifty-seven, one ninety-five, seventy-five, those need to be revised to a new number that has to add up to eight fifty. And since there, as I said, there's been some changes in the layout of the plans. I don't know if that results in some changes in the total occupancy. You need to look at that and make sure that the occupancy per banquet room is indicated in the drawings and also on the table. And the PA permit should be revised and um, uh, for these new permits.
Right, so the PA permit would be changed for the first floor ballroom, which currently, uh, the PA allows four hundred and sixty. That would be changed to three fifty. And then you would have the total of eight fifty allowed by the PAs. The the issue was that previously, there was no occupancy noted of the non-PA spaces. So the eight fifty would only apply to the PA spaces.
Right, right. And and that's, that's what, I just kind of want to make sure that PA places add up to eight fifty. And so you need to revise the PA permits to add up to, and and reflect that that count in the plan, because in the previous approved plans, we had individual room counts. If you don't want to do that, you know, you want to have the flexibility, I leave it up to you. But we do need to know at the end, even if you break it by first floor, basement, there is a cap on each one of the floors, which totals to no more than eight fifty.
Right, and I think that was some confusion too as well, because in the prior C of O, it speaks of the eight fifty as if that was the maximum for the whole building. And and we would like to clarify that it only applies to the, to the ballrooms.
Yeah, I looked at the nineteen eighty-seven plan, and and when you look at the places where the person capacity is given, it comes from all the four banquets. So I am of the assumption that the eight fifty cap was based on the banquet rooms, the person capacity for each one of the banquet rooms, and not the associated places in the kitchen or the waiting stop or any of those.
Right, right.
I think we are all of that, we are of that understanding. And we would want to retain that consistency, but the drawings, the statement, all of that need to reflect.
Yeah, and we had anticipated that. I just didn't want to make any changes until we clarified with the board on that point.
Sure.
Definitely make that conform.
You know, the, something that I want to throw it out there, I mean, we are not there yet. We're still waiting for the submission for for the revised documents. I I think um, wish, um, you know, maybe, think about, uh, I mean, the eight fifty limit is something that you can work with now, given the current condition. And and if you need to increase the capacity, you'll come back to us later. And then you have to justify, where are you going to accommodate parking spaces? That's a new ball of wax.
Yeah.
But right now, just help us get to the sixty-five.
Right, understood.
Um, any other comments from any of the commissioners, Madam Chair?
No.
Um, should we then go to the public?
Yes. Okay, this case is eight twenty-five, eighty-six BZ. Say the address. Sorry, I'll change the paper. Seventeen oh three Bronx eleven, you're the Bronx. If anyone in the waiting room wants to speak on this case, please raise your Zoom hand.
Or if you're a member of the public that would like to speak, please dial six four six five five eight eight six five six and use the Zoom webinar ID nine one two eight zero, or one eight zero eight zero six eight one.
Thank you. So while we are waiting for public to dial in, um, how much time, Council, do you need?
Uh, Kevin, how long do you need?
Kevin, I'm sorry, you're on mute.
So it's a continuous problem. Um, so uh, uh, just a matter of days is is all I need. So, you know, it is, you know, schedule at your need, Lisa and and the board, so.
Yeah, my only issue is getting revised plans together. So I think at a minimum, four weeks for that.
Okay. Four weeks to submit?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, we will see what we can do.
Thank you. Um, thank you. So I think we should take a ten-minute break, because it's after twelve oh eight, so make it twenty return. Okay?
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all back? I don't know, we didn't know.
I'm here.
I'm trying to get the applicant for the next case, the other case.
Tony.
Yeah.
I was just curious, that the case with that air pump, actually Chanda as well. Was that the first time the board made a made a gas station remove an air pump?
Um, it's, well, this is perhaps a discussion to have.
You can't have off record with the have to.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
Chair, you're not muted.
Okay. Okay.
I fear you're not muted.
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
You also had headphones in which made it hard to tell you.
Sorry, guys, just some issues trying to work those out. Is everybody here? I see Commissioner Artley Brown and Commissioner Shet. How do you see the entire screen when the break screen is on?
On the right hand side, well, if you click on participants and then there at the top of the box of the video screens, there's the little grid all the way on the right.
Right.
And if you click on that, you can make the this little window inset bigger and then you can see more people.
Oh, I don't think I have that. I see the participants, but I don't see that feature.
Oh.
Hmm. Yeah, I cannot do that. I think we are still waiting for Commissioner, is Commissioner Shet on?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, alright.
Madam Chair.
Is Madam Chair there? Okay, let's start and then let's start.
Okay.
Tony, let's start and then Madam Chair can join us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going back on the record for the public here in November 9, 2020, 10:00 AM session. The next item to be discussed is 8599 BZ 1106 Metcalf Avenue, The Bronx.
Hi, my name is Dr. Matias.
Okay, you the only one appearing, Dolly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so raise your right hand. Do you official, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to four month questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Board, for reopening this case. So we, on behalf of the client, we would like to request to have the reinstallation of the air tower as the drawing shows on the proposed location. I know before during the review session, Vice Chair brought up a few concerns on the exact location and suggested perhaps to move or propose to move the location along the walkway. However, it is a handicap accessible walkway. There's two ramps on the northwest and southeast side of it. And we believe there shouldn't be any concern as to parking along the sidewalk by Metcalf Avenue. There's a curb in that area. So there's very little concern that people were actually parked there. There's also a sign that says no parking along that area by Metcalf Avenue. And where we're showing the pump, there's already electrical connection there. And if we were to move it alongside the handicap parking area, that would be too close to the residential properties. And I know that was the initial concern and the reason why the air pump and car vacuums were removed initially because there were some noise complaints as it was too close to the residential properties. So we would like to request the Board to grant the reinstallation of this air pump in the proposed location that we are showing right now.
Um, so this will reduce your total number of parking spaces by one.
Correct, and we're okay with that.
You're okay with that. And you said there is a sign that is posted that says no parking. Where is that sign posted? Can you just?
It's really tiny, but it's in between the two bushes along Metcalf Avenue.
Okay.
To the left of the curb.
Okay. And so your argument is that because there's a curb cut right there, it could be very difficult for a vehicle to park right next to it because that will be in the way of vehicles accessing from Metcalf.
Correct.
Okay. I'm, Commissioners? Madam Chair, anybody has any? No? Okay. Alright, I think given in light of the situation and from what you're proposing, I think it is up to the applicant to make sure that the sidewalk will always remain free and clear of any vehicles that are parked. And that you will, that your applicant will, the owner will monitor the condition and I'm okay with this. But do we need to, do we need to, we need to have a public hearing? I mean, since this we're in public, we need to hear from the community.
Oh, actually, we need to, we should have reopened, I believe. I'm sorry.
Oh, what do you mean reopen? It's a new case.
Oh, well, alright.
What do you mean reopen?
Well, I thought because we put it back on the calendar, we're actually putting it back up.
Yes, this is actually a reopening of our previous decision.
Oops.
Yeah, sorry, I, oh, sorry, I blew that.
So do we need to reopen?
We have to reopen, accept a new plan.
Okay. Yeah, so please do make the roll call, Ms. Matias.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Alright, so it's real.
That was a motion to reopen, to accept a new plan.
And all the discussion that the Board has had during its review session.
Okay, alright.
Can I, can I suggest something? In light of what happened with this case and the, like, the summons that they got or the penalties that they got because of the removal of the air towers, I would suggest that the applicant add a note to the site plan indicating that the compliance of the indicated site plans shall be checked with all other city agencies except for us. So I, I believe we, we should make sure that nothing similar is going to happen from now on forward, either with this case or with any other similar case. When, if, let's say we direct an applicant to, like, remove something or add something. If this addition or removal is not in compliance, compliance with, with any other city or state or even federal agency, they, they, the applicant should make sure that what we ask it for is, is gonna fly. And instead of, like, doing the work and then coming back and, and, and like, saying that I got penalties or I got some, some sort of, like, harm. So that's just a suggestion, I.
Right, but so I would just like to point out that, as, as you well know, there are, I, I'd almost want to throw out millions of regulations as opposed to thousands or hundreds of thousands that apply to any given business, you know, not just the site. So there are property rules, there are business rules, there are tax laws, all these things. And so, and here you have a case where it's a property owner represented by Land Use Council who's not necessarily aware of something, whatever it is. Let's just say it was a tax law. Council wouldn't be aware of a tax law, right? Arguably, this might be something that the owner would be aware of, this particular thing. But this idea of us saying that the applicant needs to be aware of all the regulations that apply to it and that whatever it is we instruct, if it's in conflict with all rules and regulations, would be like an impossible feat for either side. And I do want to say that sometimes rules and regulations are, or let's say, maybe not laws, but maybe laws, like the building code, for example. You could say it has to comply with the building code, but actually the Buildings Department has the authority to waive the building code. And in a situation where we come up against something that seems to be in conflict with building code, it's possible to go to DOB and have the applicant say, look, BSA feels really strongly that this is not a safe situation. Would you waive, right? So I would, and, and most agencies have the authority to waive their own regulations and certainly their own rules, right? So I think it's too impossible of a task to expect this. Sometimes we learn about things, right? And now we're aware of this new one and that there's we're, have a heightened sensibility. But, and I think the only thing that we can do is try to help them out and to not get the violation, to get the violation dismissed because they were directed by one agency to do something without the, that agency realizing they're not allowed to do that.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not asking them to be aware of, like, all the rules and regulations. What I'm saying is not to be aware, just to check if, if, I believe on this specific case, someone on the applicant's team side should have been aware or, like, had some awareness of that kind of regulation. And, and when we directed them to do so, they should have responded to us that this kind of regulation with this, with the Consumer Affairs Department meant that we keep these air towers on site. And we could have said, okay, fine.
I, I, I think, I think lesson learned, we, we, while we all strive to do our best and so does the applicant to be aware of all the regulations, but that, as Madam Chair pointed out, it's impossible. So and this is like one of many cases where something like this has happened. And we will be mindful, but and the applicant will be careful. But I, I think that's the best we can ask for. Okay. So should we go to public or we did?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
So this case is 8599 BZ 1106 Metcalf Avenue, The Bronx.
If you would like to speak on this application, please call 646-558-8656 and use the Zoom webinar ID 912-1808-0681. Nobody has called in yet.
So while we are waiting, I, I think this there's not much that needs to be done on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything to be done? I don't think so, right?
The plan is the plan.
So that's, that's that then, so you got, right.
This could be closed and voted on.
Yeah, no, closed, not voted.
Can we?
No. We always need to give council a week to make sure they have everything in place. So I don't like, we don't do closed votes during this period. It's hard.
Can we close and vote at the earliest possible hearing?
Yeah, so then it would be November 30th.
November 30th, okay.
Yeah, so you make a note that it's no submission, that's all.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, we haven't heard anything, so should we make a motion to close?
Yeah. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
So this is closed, okay. Next item is item number 22, 201 BZ 18215 Hillside Avenue, Queens.
Hello. Eugene Pillman for the applicant.
Yay, you're here, good.
Why, why is he getting a cheer? Nobody else gets a cheer.
Because he was, they weren't registered. It wasn't, Howard wasn't registered and I was expecting Howard, so sorry, Eugene. It's good to see you.
Likewise, hope all is well.
Yes. Okay, let me raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this order to respond honestly to four month questions?
Yes.
Okay, proceed.
Um, well, thank you, everyone. We attended the review session and I think what would be best is if we put together a chart showing the open applications and any other issues that are, that are remaining. There are approximately 70 filed jobs for the site. A lot of them are minor. You know, you know, plumbing work or fire alarms, interior partitions, and most of them have already been addressed. But I think what we'll do is provide you with a list just to see any outstanding items. Believe it's a place of assembly for the cafeteria that may require a little bit of time to, to secure still. And there might be a fire alarm sign off as well. And once we complete those.
Structural safety or so?
No, there are no open permits on the site, you know, no work is ongoing. Everything structural has been finalized. Okay. It's just older filings and some of them are just vestiges that whenever properly were drawn. And as per the prior request, we'll also take a look at the, at the violations that were issued. We might have them on record. So we could submit those as well. I don't believe a temporary certificate of occupancy was, was issued for the site. You know, the building, the building, it's been, it's been occupied, you know, prior to the, prior to the enlargement. And, but I don't believe they were able to get a temporary CO issued.
Even for the additional floor?
Right, I don't believe that a temporary CO has been issued for the floor. At least it's not listed on BizWeb, you know, we could send an expedited down.
I didn't see anything.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll have somebody pull the file and take a look, but just from the website, it does not appear that there was.
Okay. Just remind me, what is it being used for? This is like a more of a rec, outdoor, like a common rec area, right?
Yeah, I believe so, with maybe some diagnostic rooms.
Okay.
Fire department's okay with this? They submitted a letter, October 29th.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from any of the Commissioners?
No.
Okay. Should we go to the public?
So this is 201 BZ 18215 Hillside Avenue, Queens. If you're calling in, it's the Zoom webinar ID, I'm sorry, the number is 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID is 912-1808-0681.
While we are waiting for anybody to call in, Mr. Pillman, how long do you anticipate it will take to provide?
We, we may have to pull some records from DOB Queens, so approximately four to six weeks, just a minute.
Okay.
So err on six weeks.
Yes.
So Commissioner, it's just you want the, they're gonna do the chart on all the other applications, no T that you still hasn't been issued, and then there was a discussion of the violations, right? Status of the violations?
And a discussion of any other items that may affect timing.
So one of the violation, there is no, I mean, based on the DOB biz, there is no record of anything.
Some of the, some of the older violations, they're in hard copy only, right, so.
Okay. So for that, you need the DOB time period?
Yeah.
The, the six weeks, sorry, okay. Okay, alright.
That's it. Alright.
Yeah, I guess wait for that or should we close, wait for the document and then?
Well, so it depends on whether any of those things might shift the position. If it's just for housekeeping, it's different, but if it might shift the position about whether it should be, right?
Okay, so then we'll keep it open. You said six weeks to submit, so that means we're looking somewhere in January or somewhere like that.
Yes, that would work, that would be great.
Okay, and by that time, you probably would have had some more other, some of the other works also more completed, so you would have had a more up to date.
Yes, exactly. We'll, we'll have everything tighten up by then.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
We are public, no, we did. So that's it.
We did that already.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so this concludes the public, sorry, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
So this concludes the public hearing for November 9, 2020, 10:00 AM session. We'll resume at 2:00 PM.
Great, thank you.